I'll start with a short prayer to the lamas of the lineage. Okay, thank you. Wonderful. Thanks for being here today. I can't tell you how exciting it has been to be able to put this program on for you. And I want to thank especially the members and friends of the Columbus Karma Tixom Choling Tibetan Buddhist Meditation Center for facilitating our class this evening. In chat, I'm going to put a couple of of quick messages. The first, the first of which is to thank you for all of the donations that you have made. I made an error last week when I said that the donations were going to go to the operations fund. It was decided that all of the funds from this class over the expenses from from Eventbrite are going to go to the Columbus KTC rebuilding fund. We're approximately $525,000 short of our goal to complete basic construction on our new building. I had a construction meeting this afternoon with the director of our center, Kim Miracle, and our construction, one of our two construction managers. And it looks like we're getting closer and closer and closer to being able to move equipment onto the site and get construction started. There's some paperwork to clear up, some bank stuff to clear up. But then we'll start constructing on our little tiny site in downtown Columbus, a Buddhist temple. It's like, it's unbelievable. But we are short $525,000. And so if you know any people of, you know, who has some money to donate, that they would like to sink into the virtuous endeavor of creating a center for meditation in the center of the city and facilitating all the programs that you've been enjoying here. Please feel free to donate. Let's see, let's see. I actually put it in once, but this is going to be the donate link. If you want to donate to Columbus KTC, this is the donation link. And additionally, I was encouraged to let you know that if you want to volunteer for the Columbus KTC and help in any, in any way with our rebuilding campaign, you can, you can check it out here. I'm going to put that link in the lower corner also. Okay, very good. So those are the words from our sponsors. So thank you very much. And now I'm going to open things up for, for questions. I think you can unmute yourselves. I think in order to ask questions, I don't have a way, an organized way of taking questions. But I think the first things to do is to answer the questions that have been written in chat. So I'd like to spend the first 20 to 25 minutes of our class tonight just answering questions that you might have, that it might have accumulated over the last few weeks of the class. So I'll start by reading the ones in chat. The first question is, if we want to memorize the root text, that is the 59 mind training slogans, the 12th century root text, is there a memorization technique you can recommend? No, I don't, I don't know anything about memorization, except that I, the only way I've ever effectively memorized anything has been to recite that thing that I am trying to memorize every single day and every single day, once a day. It'll probably take about six months. Maybe two, maybe longer, you know, maybe six months, 12 months in order to memorize things. If anybody, that's, that's the only method I've ever used has been to repeat the entirety of something just once a day, every day for like six months to a year. But if Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche, by the way, just so you know, Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche taught on these 59 mind training slogans at our home monastery, Karma Triong Dharma Chakra, a number of years ago. And he actually said it was unnecessary to memorize the slogan. So, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to say that, I don't want to discourage anybody from doing it if they really feel called to and led to memorize them all. I don't want to say that's not a good thing. It's wonderful if you want to. But he said that more important from his point of view, more important than memorizing the 59 slogans is to actually practice the 59 slogans. And if you want to practice the heart of the 59 slogans, it's to to give, to basically place others' interest ahead of your own interest. In other words, make the wishing for the benefit of all sentient beings a very important part of your everyday Dharma practice. So, and we're going to get into that a little bit more later tonight when we talk about point four, which is how to expand the practice of mind training into your entire life. And we'll also talk about it next week when we talk about the, the precepts of mind training. So don't want to discourage anybody from memorizing, but that's how I did it. And if anybody has helpful memorization techniques, you can type it into chat and then we'll share it with people later. Here's a second question from chat. "I've been practicing the Lojong practice that you recommended, but I have difficulty with visualization. Can you give any direction for ways to actualize visualization?" Yes, Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche and several of my other teachers have given some helpful hints for how to visualize something. Because if you remember, at the beginning of our Lojong daily practice, the direction is to visualize our guru above the top of our head, made of light and shining. And, and that I told people that if you don't have a personal teacher, you can actually visualize the Buddha Shakyamuni or any enlightened being that you like, that you wish, you can visualize above your head as long as that enlightened being is made of light. And this, I think, is the key piece, is to recognize, Trungpa Rinpoche shared this one time. He said, "When you start to visualize, it's like a form of shamatha, which is calm-abiding meditation, which is all about training your attention." So he said, "When you first start visualizing something, it will be inconsistent. You'll see the face, but not the feet, or you'll, or it won't stick together, or it'll move around and things like this." And he said, "The reason for this is that we're using our mental consciousness in order, our thoughts, our thought-created consciousness to create these pictures. And so because our minds are wavering, the attention of our minds is wavering, the pictures will waver. And so there is really no way for a person at the very beginning to be able to visualize something completely and placidly and perfectly." So what Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche recommended was that instead of trying to worry and press really hard on your mind to make something stick or make it appear really clear, he said, "Don't press too hard or it'll get worse." He said, "Just be aware of the space, whether it's in front of you for front visualizations or above your head, whether it's in front of you or over your head, whatever you're visualizing." He said, "Just know that that Buddha or Bodhisattva is present. And don't worry about seeing, quote unquote, seeing it with your mind sight. Just know that they are present and interact with the space above your head as though the being was present." And I hope that'll help you. Yeah, okay, thank you. Then, is there another question from chat? This is my last question from chat, I think. "Is there a more optimal time for making offerings, particularly the smoke offerings?" Yes, last time we talked about how to practice the four actions or the four, the four practices, which is accumulating merit, confessing faults, making offerings to gods and demons and making offerings to tikkinis and protectors. And we talked about Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche's advice as a method of doing all four of these to do an incense offering where you take one stick of incense, you light it and you put it outdoors. And you imagine that that incense turns into wonderful offerings. And that you offer these wonderful offerings that you imagine in the, in the incense smoke. You offer it to the Buddhas and Bodhisattvas. You offer it to all of the Dharma protectors. You offer it to the beings of the six realms, all of us, you know, so that we're free from suffering. And then finally, to all of your karmic creditors, the people who you've harmed in previous lifetimes as a way of repaying your karmic debt to them. And you do this with your imagination. And, and the questioner is asking, "Well, what time of day is optimal for this?" Personally, this type of offering is traditionally made in the morning. And that, and that can be anytime in the morning. But to tell you the truth, there are times I've forgotten to do it in the morning and I do it in the evening and it's just fine. I don't think there's any real problem. The optimal time is morning because that way you actually practice it and all of the beings that you're offering to are awake and moving around. So there's that. Now, it does look like there are two more questions. Oh, there's one more question. Okay. When doing the Tonglen practice, if you remember Tonglen, this is the compassion meditation where as you breathe out, you imagine giving goodness to others. And that's called sending. And then receiving is where you imagine purifying and removing their suffering. So when you're doing Tonglen, how often do we need to repeat the instructions to ourselves? At some point, can we send and receive without reminding ourselves of the guidelines? For example, just with the thought love and compassion? I think each person, that's a really excellent question. And I think that every person will adapt differently to how this practice is done. What I've discovered in the 20-some years that I've been teaching is that everybody's karmic makeup is really different. So how they work with the teachings is actually really different. So some people will want to read the instructions. They'll want to read the instructions out loud to themselves and then quietly meditate and visualize it. Other people will, after a period of time, internalize the, the instructions and they'll just merely be able to send goodness to other beings and remove their, their suffering. Send beings, send to beings on the out breath and receive from beings on the in breath. With that intermediate stage, remember, remember when Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche's, when we read his instructions from his book, Dharma Paths, it said, "When you receive the negativity of others, you imagine that it meets the, your Bodhisattva motivation, it dissolves into nothing and disappears." Remember that? And so then when you breathe out again, you give happiness and goodness to others on the out breath. So yes, you can, you could just do it simply by thinking that you give love, you practice love on the out breath and practice compassion on the in breath. But it has to be equal. You can't forget the instructions. So it has to be structured enough so that you know what you're doing. If you lose your place and forget whether you're sending or whether you're receiving, it's time to close the practice for that time and then to, to start again. If you remember, in Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche's instructions in his book, Dharma Paths, he says that Tonglen should be, only be done for a short time. And that, I think that is really helpful because if you do it for a short time, just a minute or two or three, then it's easy to clearly think of sending and clearly think of receiving without getting lost in what you're doing. So, and now here's another question. "Does Tonglen require an actual visualization or thoughts enough?" This is related to the previous question and I, I will give that to each person individually. For some people, they like to visualize that they're giving happiness on the out breath and that they'll make it as light or whatever. And they might want to visualize the suffering as darkness or something like that. That is a traditional visualization. But for some people, it's much easier to just think that they're giving away all their merit and goodness on the out breath and that they're receiving and removing suffering on the in breath. So whichever way helps you the most and helps you actually feel that you're, that you're sending goodness to beings and you're receiving and removing their sufferings, whichever of those methods is the best. So I think the most important thing is to actually, to actually do the practice. I have time for just a few more questions. So now we're going to go to audio since we've finished and completed the, the questions that are in chat. Does anybody on audio want to join in with a question? You can raise your hand.
Lama Kathy?
Yes, yes, Bill.
Hi, how are you? Thank you. So one thing that's been on my mind since last week's session. And the topic came up on the, on the slogan of drive all blames into one.
Yeah.
And there was, you know, there's concern about, you know, working with, you know, with trauma and that danger of like, you know, balancing so it doesn't turn into sort of victim blaming and that kind of thing. And that was some heavy stuff, but I, is, is there anything, you know, when we're not ready to jump like both feet into that for these big, you know, traumatic kind of things? Is there anything really too trivial? Because I was thinking that, like, there's a lot of grist for the, for this Lojong mill for me and like, the thing I was thinking of, you know, the things we blame others for. And for me, it's like their faulty driving or taking too long to like count all their coins at the, at the cashier's line, you know, or not wearing their face masks properly, you know, these kinds of, these petty grievances. You know, that, you know, in themselves are, are pretty trivial. But, you know, is it, you know, is there really anything too trivial? And is that a good sort of training wheel type of thing for this drive all blames into one? You know, these petty grievances, these, these little things like, oh, you know, that, you know, that's easy for me to take it on without turning it into something big and heavy.
Yeah, I get, I understand the question. And, and I think that there is nothing too trivial because it's all, it's all part of our mind. Our mind is what creates all of these thoughts and feelings. You know, it's our mind that makes us annoyed. It's our, it's our mind and our bad habits of, of clamping down and blaming others. And, and so there's nothing too trivial. And, and the way that has worked for me the best has been to use the, the three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue slogan back from point two, where if I'm beginning to feel annoyed with someone, rather than saying, "Drive all blame into one," what I'll say is, "I'm feeling annoyed." And annoyance is aversion and it's one of the three mental poisons. So I'm going to take on all of the aversion to waiting in line behind this person who's counting coins. Or, you know, I'm going to take on all that negativity that I'm feeling from the whole universe. You know, like, may everybody who's irritated and annoyed, I take on all of their irritation and annoyance right here, right now. And may all of us, may I and all of us be free from such annoyance in the future. And may we become Buddhas, which is the complete freedom from annoyance. I hope that helps. Because, because we don't need to engage drive all blame into one unless it really, unless we can't get out of a cycle of blame. The three objects, three poison slogan will really help a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And there's time for, I think, one more. Yeah. Is there another question out there? Okay. Well, thanks, guys. I wanted to, because I was, as all presenters, I think, can tell you, whenever you're presenting a lot of material, you get a little bit antsy about not getting all of it out. So I spent the first three classes really pushing hard to get through the first three of the seven points. Because the, because I'm, I'm concerned, I want to make sure that those first three points got through to you because they're, of all of them, they're the, the most important from my point of view in terms of training. So thanks for that. So, so now I actually have to go grab one of my notes that's over on the table here. So excuse me for just a moment, gotta grab it. Okay. I think we're going to go ahead and begin with the, with the Lojong, the Lojong practice. I'm just gonna, I'm going to pick up with the, one more recitation of the refuge prayer. And then we'll do a little bit of, a little bit of a practice. We're going to do the refuge prayer and the guru yoga. Okay. We'll begin the practice by reciting this prayer beginning with, "Until I reach enlightenment. Until I reach enlightenment, I take refuge in all the Buddhas and in the Dharma and the Sangha. By the merit of accomplishing the six perfections, may I achieve Buddhahood for the benefit of all sentient beings." At the beginning of the period of meditation, imagine your root guru sitting on a lotus and moon seat above your head. And you can imagine your teacher, either one of your Dharma teachers, or you can visualize the Buddha, the Buddha Shakyamuni, the historical Buddha. His body is radiant and his face is happy and smiling as he regards all beings with non-referential compassion. In him, all the root and lineage gurus are present. With intense respect and devotion, repeat the short prayer supplication. I'll, I'll repeat this three times. "I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion and bodhicitta to arise in my mind. I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion and bodhicitta to arise in my mind. I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion and bodhicitta to arise in my mind. Then imagine that your guru descends through the top of your head and sits in your heart in a pavilion of light, like an open shell. This exercise in intense respect and devotion is known as guru yoga. It is important to begin every period of meditation in this way." Okay. So now we're going to talk about today's topic. As you know, we've been covering the seven-point mind training. A text that was written in the 12th century by the Tibetan saint Chikawa Yeshe Dorje. And to understand the 59 mind training slogans written by this great Tibetan saint, we've been using this commentary, The Great Path of Awakening, which was written in the 19th century by another Tibetan saint, Jamgon Kontrul the Great. And in this commentary, The Great Path of Awakening, he explains the seven points of training the mind. Now you'll remember from our earlier episodes that we talked about the fact that mind training is needed because the practice of meditation where we allow our minds to come to rest and begin to feel a calm-abiding through our quiet sitting meditation, it pacifies our mental afflictions. But it doesn't uproot our mental afflictions because the selfishness that gives rise to our mental afflictions is still part of our being. Therefore, we practice mind training as a way of working with and dissolving those, those self-clinging thoughts and bringing to the surface our thoughts of benefiting ourselves and others. And so that's why we're, why shamatha or calm-abiding meditation or mindfulness practice is not sufficient to completely remove the selfishness that is at the root of our mental afflictions. And so this is why the mind training practices were developed. The mind training practices were taught by the Buddha Shakyamuni. And then they were stated and restated through the ages by other, other Buddhist masters. In the eighth century, the Indian master Shanti Deva talked about exchanging oneself for other in his book, The Way of the Bodhisattva. In the 12th century, Chikawa Yeshe Dorje, the Tibetan saint, wrote the 59 mind training slogans that are part of The Great Path of Awakening. And so today, we're, we are learning these techniques in order to help uproot the selfishness that's at the, at the bottom of all of our complex complexities and all of our difficulties in the practice of, of kindness, love and compassion. Because if you remember from the very first class, we spoke about the difficulties and what stands between us and other people. And there usually are mental afflictions and our bad habits of reaction. And so all of those negative mental afflictions are rooted in our self-clinging and self-fixation. So how do you begin to dissolve self-clinging and self-fixation? Through training the mind to feel love and training the mind to feel compassion. And so by training the mind in love and compassion, we can slowly dissolve these negative mental afflictions. So in any case, I just wanted to, to tell you a little bit about the background and what brought us up to today. So the seven points, I'm going to read the actual list of the seven points of mind training. And you will find them in this book on page seven. The seven points are, point one, the groundwork, the instruction on what supports the Dharma. And this consists of the preliminaries for a session of practice, which is the guru yoga we just did. And then the reflection on the precious human life, the impermanence of our lives, the truth of karma and the defects of worldly objectives. And so once we have a foundation, this foundation, then we can go on and study the actual practice, which is training in bodhicitta. And the slogans that we learned in this one were the four slogans to meditate on nature of mind itself, the four ultimate bodhicitta slogans. And then the, the very simple relative bodhicitta slogans that taught us the practice of Tonglen. That's what we learned in point two. In point three, the transformation of adversity into the path of awakening. If you remember from last week, I shared the, the prayer from Khenpo Sutram Jamso, where he said, "May all bad circumstances arise as our friends along the path. May all bad circumstances actually bring us benefit. May we realize emptiness, the complete freedom from elaborations and achieving these aspirations. May we benefit all sentient beings." And so sharing this prayer was a way of talking about the need to transform negative things that happen to us into the path of awakening. And so we talked about how to do that using ultimate bodhicitta, how to do that using relative bodhicitta and how to do that with the four practices. So today, now this brings us to today, to, to number four. Number four is the utilization of the practice in one's entire life. So now that we've learned the, the first three points, we have, we have the basics. We know Tonglen, we know the three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue slogan. And hopefully we've started some kind of daily practice of Tonglen, some kind of daily practice of, of the three object slogan. And of the offerings or whatever we want to add. But now, now we have to figure out how, how do we make this practice, like fill the entirety of our life? Because if we only practice love and compassion when we're sitting on our meditation seat, it's not quite enough. It doesn't quite get us all the way to, to really working with our mental afflictions on a moment-to-moment basis. It's great that we can practice on our cushions. It's great that we can practice on our cushions, but if we get off our cushions and then get impatient with ourselves and impatient with others, we could, we could like expand our love a little farther toward ourselves and our, a love a little farther toward others. So the, to me, the there is a key instruction that we have learned through the first three points. There's a key instruction, and that key instruction as is, if we can practice love and compassion, if we can practice Tong Leng, out, you know, out breath giving goodness, in breath removing suffering, out breath giving goodness, in breath removing suffering. If we can do that simple practice at any time in our life, if we can then think that when we have negative mental afflictions, we mentally take on the negative mental afflictions of all beings and make the aspiration that we may all become Buddhas. What this really means is that every moment of your life has meaning. Just want to repeat that, every moment of your life has meaning. Every moment of your life is, has a purpose and a meaning. And the reason I want to say this is because a lot of us feel like unfinished products. A lot of us feel like we're not worthy or we're not good enough or that somehow we're really, really mixed up and maybe even this powerful Dharma won't help us. But what if, what if we really do have Buddha nature? The Buddha said, "We all have it. There's not a single being that lacks Buddha nature." And it's not that some beings have more Buddha nature and others have less Buddha nature. We all have the same amount of Buddha nature. So if we have this potential to awaken and become Buddhas, we're all precious. We all have potential and we all have, we all have value that we don't have to earn. So if, if this is true, this means that every time we breathe out and give goodness to others, every time we breathe in and remove suffering from others, our life has purpose and meaning. A lot of people, when we, when you would ask them, well, is there ever a time you think that your life will no longer be meaningful? They tend to catastrophize and think, well, what if I, what if I had to stay in bed all day long? Maybe I was sick or maybe something happened and I couldn't get out of bed, would my life lose its meaning? And the answer to that is if a person's able to practice Tong Leng, then even that life would have meaning. As long as you can breathe, you can practice. You can practice mindfulness, you can practice love, you can practice compassion, you can let your mind rest in its own empty nature. You can, every moment, you can have meaning and purpose. And so part of the reason I want to say this is just for those of us like me who kind of grew up feeling guilt and perhaps shame about themselves. A lot of people say, "I'm overcoming my Jewish guilt," or "I'm overcoming my Catholic guilt," or "I'm overcoming my Protestant guilt," or "I'm overcoming my family guilt." We all have it in some way, shape, or form. And how are we going to work with that? But how else are we going to work with that except by recognizing our potential, our value, and the fact that we can practice Dharma every moment of our lives? So anyhow, I just had to get that out first because, because to me, this is the basis for the fourth point of mind training, the expansion of mind training to fill our whole life. Okay, so I, I'm going to briefly check chat to make sure there's no new questions. Nope, okay, good. So what I want to do is, oh, by, by the way, one more thing about your life having meaning. You know what this means? This means that there's nothing, no part of you that can be thrown away. You don't have to throw away anything. Yes, we may want to correct our bad habits. We have, you know, we will continue to correct our bad habits. But this doesn't, but what this means is we don't have to think of any part of ourselves as being bad. In fact, if you've read Minjer Rinpoche's books, he says you can actually make an offering of, of your, of the things you're ashamed of. You can say, "Here Buddhas and Bodhisattvas, take this thing that I'm most ashamed of. Please have this as an offering and take this and hold this for me and be with me and travel with me." And so anyway, so it's, it's just something to keep in mind. So now we're going to turn to page 25 in our books and look at the fourth point. Okay. On page 25, in the middle of the page, it says, "The utilization of the practice in one's whole life." This is the fourth point. The fourth point, which to teach a summary of the practice for one's whole life, has two sections, what to do during one's lifetime and what to do at the time of death. So what he's going to teach us are five skills, five skills that he calls the five forces. Five skills or five forces that if you use these five things, if you do these five things, it will expand your practice beyond your meditation cushion. And so I'm actually going to just read from the book because it's pretty powerful. "A summary of the essential instructions trained in the five forces. The five forces summarize the crucial points of practice and in a single line contain numerous profound key instructions for the practice of the Holy Dharma. First is the force of impetus, to give a strong impetus to the mind by thinking from this moment until enlightenment, at least from now until I die, and especially for the next year and the next month, and definitely from today until tomorrow, the two aspects of Bodhicitta will never be absent from my mind." So that's the first thing is to make, to, to give yourself a push, saying, you know, "I'm a Lojong practitioner. I'm going to keep working on Lojong. I'm not going to give up. I'm just going to keep trying to do my practice. I'm going to do my best. And I'm going to try to learn Bodhicitta." The second of the five forces is the force of familiarization. Whenever, whatever occupation or activity you are engaged in, virtuous, non-virtuous, or indeterminate, maintain mindfulness and awareness strictly and train again and again in keeping the two aspects of Bodhicitta ever in mind. In a word, study and train in Bodhicitta as your principal form of virtuous activity. So since Bodhicitta, if you remember from the very first chapter of the book or the introduction to this book where Jamgon Kontrul said, "Because working with and removing self-fixation brings about Buddhahood, then Bodhicitta is the, is the main practice that the Buddha gave us to remove self-fixation." So if we want to remove self-fixation, then we practice Bodhicitta. And so now committing ourselves to this and saying, "I'm going to familiarize myself. I'm going to do my Tong Leng every day. I'm going to try to practice the three, the three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue. I'm going to try to practice those things every day. Going to try to understand the empty nature phenomena, even if I don't totally get it just now. I'm going to try my best to do these practices." That's the second of the five forces, the force of familiarization. The third is the force of virtuous seeds. He says, "Always concentrate your full energy, physical, verbal, and mental on virtuous activity. Never be content with your efforts to arouse and strengthen Bodhicitta." So in other words, Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche used to say it this way. He'd say, "Never say, 'Okay, I've done enough virtue. I can quit now.'" It's, I mean, I know every, all of us eventually have to go to sleep at night. So I mean, I understand there is an end to the virtuous activity of the daytime. But you can even, when you're going to sleep at night, say, "Well, wherever I'm going in my dreams tonight, may I benefit beings there?" And that would be the end of your, your, your waking time. But, but regardless, the idea here is that we should never say, "Okay, I can stop practicing Bodhicitta now. I can stop making offerings and accumulating virtue and so on." And say, "I don't ever have to do that again." So he's just basically saying continuously practice virtue. The fourth of the five forces is the force of repudiation. Whatever, whenever ego-cherishing thoughts come up, abandon them completely by thinking in this way. Previously, and so remember I told you that the Lojong writers, what they often do is they often create a fictional character that they call my ego fixation and then they scold it. Well, this is another one of these scoldings for your ego fixation. "Previously, for time without beginning, you, ego fixation, have made me wander in samsara and experience different kinds of suffering. In addition, all the suffering and evil that occur in this life are brought on by you. There is no happiness in your company, so I shall do everything I can to subdue and destroy you." So I mean, the idea here is that when you find yourself engaging in a bad habit, do your best to say, "Oh yeah, bad habit. Hi there. Hi, bad habit. I know you're trying to protect me, but you know what? I'm okay now. I've got mind training. You, you can, you, you can stop now." Or you can say, "Okay, bad habit. I'm going to leave you over here, but thanks a lot." So you can, you can bless that bad habit and put it over there and say, "Now I'm going to be doing something different." And, and so, but if you need to get sharp, if you need to get sharp and say, "Bad habit, no, I'm turning away from you completely." If, if the gentle approach doesn't work, then take the, take the less gentle approach. So that's the force of repudiation, meaning don't let yourself go too far down a negative road. It might be that you don't notice that you're having a negative mental affliction until about maybe, oh, let's say, a year has passed or two years. But you might actually get it down to like one month or two months or maybe a few weeks. Eventually, you'll, you'll notice your negative pattern happening at some point, and that's the time to apply Bodhicitta, when you realize that you're doing it. And then the fifth of the five forces is the force of aspiration. "At the end of any virtuous activity, pray sincerely and dedicate all virtue to these objectives. May I, on my own, guide all sentient beings to Buddhahood." Now I know that sounds a little strange. Maybe it sounds like we're getting ahead of ourselves and thinking, "Oh, I'm really great." Well, here's the thing. We, I remember Thaisi Trungpa Che was asked about this kind of aspiration, saying, "Well, you know, why do we make aspirations that are so big? Are we supposed to like think that we're great?" And he said, "It's not that you're great, it's that Dharma's really great." And that in Tibet, he said, "We have a saying that when we make aspirations, we should not worry about practicality, but we should aim high." And so aiming to liberate all beings from samsara is pretty high, so I think that fits. "So may I, on my own, guide all sentient beings to Buddhahood, in particular from now until I attain enlightenment. May I never forget the two aspects of precious Bodhicitta, even when I am dreaming. May the two aspects of Bodhicitta grow stronger and stronger. Whatever adverse conditions I encounter, may I take them as aids to Bodhicitta." So that's the, the, the first teaching of, which is how to use the five forces to expand your practice. And you can do this by, you can, you can do this by trying to remember these five things during the day. Or you can just use like a simple, a simple formula. For example, when you wake up in the morning, you can use that force of impetus by saying, "Whatever I do today, no matter what I do today, may everything I do today benefit beings in some way." That means that you may not know how you're going to benefit beings, but, and you may actually benefit beings by being foolish, by, by being foolish or by looking foolish. Sometimes when we try to do the right thing, people criticize us or they think we're like a Pollyanna or a goody-two-shoes. But the fact of the matter is, no matter how we look to other beings, if we say, "May everything I do today benefit beings in some way and may all beings attain enlightenment," this actually even covers our mistakes. Khenpo Rinpoche said, "When you make mistakes," he said, "Sometimes you give yourself a hard time." I call it taking an invisible stick and hitting yourself on the head. You know, sometimes we give ourselves a hard time when we make a mistake. But Rinpoche said, "Instead of doing that," he said, "You can use the three object slogan and say, 'May my mistake contain the mistakes of all sentient beings and by my working through this mistake, may all mistakes be purified.'" So, "May all mistakes be purified. May my mistake contain all mistakes and may, in the future, may we become Buddhas, which is the complete freedom from mistakes." So in any case, that's something we can do. So you wake up in the morning and you say, "No matter what I do, may it benefit somebody in some way." And then throughout the day, when you're bored, start thinking, "May all sentient beings be happy. May all sentient beings become Buddhas." Or, "I wish to be a benefit to this next person I'm going to meet." Or, "May I tame my mind when I'm with this person who gets on my last raw nerve," you know? And, and just through the day, just keep wishing for the benefit of beings. And then if you have the chance to, if you're, again, if you're bored and you see something beautiful and you say, like, "Wow, this beautiful sunset. I offer this beautiful sunset to the Buddhas and Bodhisattvas for the benefit of suffering beings." Or if you see a person who's suffering and you think, "Oh, I, I will, I will do sending and taking, even if all you do is get one breath in of removing their suffering and one breath out of giving them happiness." That, that's, that's enough. You've, you've gotten a good start. And if you find that you're wrong and that you've made a mistake, you can apologize if it's appropriate and it's possible. So that's how you can do your day. And then at the end of the day, when you're getting ready to go to sleep, you can think, "Well, how did I do today?" And if you think that you did some good things, you rejoice and you say, "May I do more of those good things tomorrow?" And if you did things that you regret, you confess them to the Buddhas and Bodhisattvas and say, "Tomorrow, may I do less of these." And then you can go to sleep thinking, "May wherever I go in my dreams tonight, may I benefit beings there." And that's a little bit about how you can practice the five forces without having to memorize the five forces. You don't have to memorize the five forces if you try to think of benefiting beings when you wake up throughout the day and then the evening before you go to sleep. So I, I only have a few minutes for questions, but if anybody has questions, you can unmute and ask your question about the five forces. No questions? Oh, yeah, no question? Okay. Well, just had to, had to double check. So then, so that's about what we do while we're living. But what about at the time of death? How do we practice Lojong at the time of death? When I was in three-year retreat, Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche taught us a lot about the process of dying. And we learned all of the different things we would need to know to help a person with prayer at the time of death. Because lamas, we have to pray with people at the time of death, so we learned how to do that. We learned how to do mantras and how to practice and how to visualize and how to help people at the time of death. But during one of those instructions, one of the three retreatants asked Khenpo Rinpoche, "Well, Rinpoche, what should people who, who don't know all these things, what should they do?" And he said, "Well," he said, "you'll meet a couple different kinds of people in your prac, in your practice of helping others." He said, "Actually, it's probably more like three different kinds. They'll be the kind of person who's just like you, who's had all the training you've had. And then all you have to do is remind them of their training and they can do their training at, at the time of death." But for people who've learned Lojong, he said, "You can teach them how to do Lojong at the time of death, how to do sending and receiving practice at the time of death." And then he said, "For people who don't know how to do Lojong and Tong Leng, he said, "You can tell them and, and show them how to make positive mental aspirations for themselves and for their loved ones as a way of taming their own minds." For example, I went to visit a man in hospice once who was a great scholar and had even written books about comparative religion. And he said, you know, he said, the shame of it all, he said, is now that I've come to the end of my life, I don't know what I believe in. He said, so I don't know whether I'm a Christian, a Buddhist, or what I am. And so he and I talked a bit. And he tried to meditate, but he was too weak to really practice meditation. And so I said, well, could you make positive aspirations for yourself? Like, may I be well, may my children be well, may my children be safe, may my, may my family be safe, may all go well, may they have health and well-being? And he said, oh yeah, I can do that. And, and he and his wife would do that every day. And she said it helped him a great deal. So those are, those are a few things that I learned about the time of death from Kemper Rinpoche. If you've learned all of those practices that are taught in the three-year retreat, all you have to do is remind somebody of their practice. But if the person hasn't learned these things, but they've learned Lojong, you can remind them to do Tonglen. And if they don't know those things, you can remind them to make positive aspirations for themselves and for others. So anyhow, that's just a general comment about the teachings. Now, if you look here in the book, on page twenty-seven, he says, when a person who has trained in this teaching, I'm sorry, the, the slogan says, the Mahayana instructions for how to die are to use the five forces. Posture is important. Now, he'll get to posture later on. But first, he talks about the five forces. He says, the first, he, he gives the five forces, but he gives them in a different order, and it's a significant different order. The, he starts with virtuous seeds. He says, when a person who's practiced this receives a terminal diagnosis, they can practice the five forces. First, they can practice the force of virtuous seeds by, at the very least, mentally offering all of their worldly goods to the three jewels. Now, he says here, you can give away all of your worldly goods, but for those of us in modern times, we can't necessarily do all that. We may not be dying in the context of a family. We may be dying on our own. So what we would do would be at least mentally give away all of our physical and worldly objects as a way of lightening our load, so to speak. Because, for example, I met a woman in hospice who could not meditate, even though she had learned how. And she says, I'm too worried about my house. I'm too worried about my cats. What will happen to my cats? What will happen to my house? And until, and so I, thinking about this, virtuous seeds, I said, I want you to talk to your brother today and settle the house and settle the cats. Get that done. And she, and once she got the house settled, once she got the cat settled, then she could meditate. So I think it's important for us to remember that. I also knew an amazing woman who was not Buddhist, and she called me a few years ago out of nowhere and said, I read, I read about you on the internet. Can I ask you questions about dying? And I said, sure. And, and she wanted to learn how Buddhists practice at the time of death, even though she wasn't Buddhist. And so I read her this section of the book, and she started mentally making a list of all of her worldly goods and actually slowly started dispersing them to her loved ones. Now, she kept the things she needed for her life and her, and then she had family members caring for her at the time of her death. But at least mentally, she was able to give away her worldly goods and even physically was able to give some of them away. It was really amazing. She was amazing. And so that's the first of the five forces, the force of virtuous seeds. The second is the force of aspiration. And that is to take hold of the aspiration that from now until I die, and even into my future lifetime, may I always be a practitioner of Bodhicitta. May I always aspire to meet teachers who crack, who teach these things and to practice these things. The, the force of repudiation is to remember that blaming others at the time of death is hard on our psyche. And therefore, we have to try to feel gratitude to all of those who have tried to help us, all of the doctors that are trying to work with us, and all of our helpers, and not to think, oh, well, they should have done this, or they should have done that, to, to let go of negative thoughts regarding others. And then the force of impetus means, may I never be without the two kinds of precious Bodhicitta, not now, and not even in the intermediate stage known as the bardo after death. And then finally, the force of familiarization is to practice Tonglen and ultimate Bodhicitta meditation that you have already learned. And then he gets into the idea of posture. And he says, that then he gives traditional teachings on, on the, the time of death. It's taught that if a person can sit in the seven-point meditation posture at the time of death, that's excellent. But if they can't, he said, they, they should rest in what's called the lion's pose, because it was the pose adopted by the Buddha Shakyamuni at the time of his death, which is, which is lying on one's right side with one's right fingers blocking the, the nostrils of, of, of the, of the right side of the nose. And then breathing through the left side, one then practices sending and taking. And, and so here's what he says. And, and by the way, you might ask, well, why the right side? And I did ask Kemper Rinpoche, Kempo Karthar Rinpoche this question. And he said, breathing through the left side, if you can, suppresses negative thoughts. So I think that's, basically, it's meant to help you when you might be feeling stressed, mentally stressed. If you can do it, great. If you can't do it, just lie on, on one's right side if you can, and don't worry about blocking nostrils and things like that. Just, Kemper Rinpoche just said, just lie with your face on your right, your, your cheek on your right hand. And then, this is, and then he gives a combination meditation. He gives a Tonglen and ultimate Bodhicitta meditation for the person to do. He says, this is in the middle of the second to last paragraph in, on page twenty-eight. He says, while the main point is to practice these forces, a couple sentences down, he says, while breathing through the left nostril, one should begin by meditating on love and compassion, and then train in sending and taking in conjunction with the coming and going of the breath. Then, without clinging mentally to anything, one should rest evenly in a state of knowing that birth and death, samsara and nirvana and so on are all projections of mind. And the mind itself does not exist as anything. In this state, one should continue to breathe as well as one can. Then he says, there are many highly regarded instructions on how to die, but none, it is said, is more wonderful than this one. So Jamgon Kontrul is telling us about this method. And actually, Kempo Karthar Rinpoche said exactly the same thing. If a person can use this practice of sending and receiving and then mentally meditating on ultimate Bodhicitta, this is the, the most amazing practice that a person can use. Now, at the top of page twenty-nine, he talks about using a salve. And this is because in old Tibet, you couldn't always have a Lama present to do the transference of consciousness at the time of death. And this is a whole nother series of practices that involve a Lama who has training, mentally meditating that the person who has died ejects their consciousness and then it goes to the pure realm of the Buddha Amitabha. And this is a, this is a something, it's an amazing thing that can be done by certain Lamas and things like this to help a person who is dying to ensure a pure rebirth for themselves. But not everybody has access to a Lama. And so because he wants to benefit beings, Jamgon Kontrul says, now, if you make this salve, you can put this on the head of the person and it will do the same thing. It will be, it will attract the consciousness to the top of the head for a higher rebirth. And so he, he says that this salve should be compounded of wild honey, ash from burning unspoiled seashells, and filings from an iron magnet. Well, not all of us modern people may have access to these things. So Kempo Karthar Rinpoche came up with an, an alternative that many of us actually might be able to get our hands on. Just any ointment, doesn't matter what it is, you can use any ointment or even water if you want to. And a lot of us have, in our collections of sacred objects, we have sand that has come from a mandala. If you've ever gone to see monks make a sand mandala, sometimes they give little packets of that sand. And all you need is a pinch of that sand, and you place it at the top of the head. Eight finger widths back from your original hairline, there's a little depression in the top of your head. You put a little ointment right there and then tap the, the sand into place, and it will act as a blessing to the person. So if you have that kind of sand, you can, you can instruct your loved ones to be, who are with you at the time of dying, to just put that little bit of ointment and sand at the top of your head after you have passed away. So that's just a little bit of extra help from Jamgon Kontrul, who as a Bodhisattva is trying to help the maximum number of people with his instruction. Now, it's about five minutes past the hour, but I still have time for one or two questions, if people have questions about this section. No questions? Going once? Going twice? Okay. All right. Well, then, we're going to move on to point five. To point five of the seven points of mind training. You'll find this on page twenty-nine of your book. Near the top of the page, it says, the extent of proficiency in mind training. That's the fifth of the seven points. Now, the reason I, I, I like to put this with number four is because it's so easy to teach. Because all of us, when we do any Buddhist practice or spiritual development practice, we all have a question that's kind of hiding in the back of our minds. And that question is, how will I know if it's working? How will I know that my practice of Dharma is working? How will I know if my mind training, my Lojong, my Tonglen, sending and receiving practice, how will I know if it's working? And this section is of slogans, is slogans that give you a clue about how you know whether it's working or not. And the first of these points, the first slogan in this section, is the most important one. And the slogan is, all instructions have one aim. Since the aim of all Dharma, both Mahayana and Hinayana, is simply to tame ego clinging, as you practice Dharma or work at mind training, ego clinging should decrease. So what this means is that if, as one teacher once said to me, if as you practice Dharma, you get more arrogant, more opinionated, more egocentric, you're probably going in the wrong direction. But if you become less strongly opinionated, if you become more loving and accepting, if you, if you're, if your personality becomes less rigid and more supple, and you can give and take a little bit better with other people and not be so harsh on yourself and not be so harsh on others, even if you can just improve a tiny bit, one percent, then that is evidence that your practice is going well. And so he says, if your efforts in Dharma do not counteract ego clinging, your practice is meaningless. Well, as Sitarim Rinpoche said, all you have to do is improve one percent. He says, if you improve one percent, he said that in a hundred lifetimes, you'll be a Buddha. It's okay, it's guaranteed. He said, once you start practicing, you're, you're on your way to becoming a Buddha. Then he said, since this is the one criterion that determines whether Dharma practice is effective or not, it is said to be the yardstick by which a Dharma person is measured. So that's the most important of the slogans. Next slogan is, two testimonies, rely on the important one. So here's what he says here, for other people to see you as a Dharma person is one a testimony. But ordinary people do not know what is hidden in your mind and may just be taking joy in certain improvements in the way you act. They may say nice things like, oh, you're so nice, or, oh, you're so kind, or, oh, you're so good, and so forth. He said, one sign of proficiency in mind training is that there is never any shame or embarrassment about your state of mind. Well, it's gonna be a long time before any of us really gets there, but we might see a little improvement in, in our, in our tendency to beat ourselves over the head and so forth and so on. He said, consequently, don't be attached to the judgment of others, thinking, oh, I've practiced enough now. But rely principally on the testimony of your own mind itself. So that's one. The next, the next slogan is, a joyous state of mind is a constant support. Now, this is kind of subtle. Basically, he's not saying that a Lojong practitioner is happy, happy, happy all the time, time, time. You know, it, what he's saying is that when, well, here he says, when there is never any fear or despair, no matter what adversity or suffering is encountered, when difficulty is taken as an aid to mind training and you always have the help of a joyful mind, then you have acquired proficiency. When adverse conditions come, meditate joyfully, and in addition, learn to take joyfully the adversity others experience. Well, most of us will only begin to notice this sort of joyful state of mind much, much later in our Dharma practice. Right now, it's still kind of stop and start and trial and error and good, and good days and bad days. But what some people have told me is that once they start thinking about the benefit of others and start wishing for the benefit of others, things, they begin to lighten up about themselves and begin to lighten up about others, just a little bit. Kempo Karthar Rinpoche described this once. He said, when you start thinking about the benefit of others and just wishing for the benefit of others, he said, this starts a momentum of goodness within you. And this momentum of goodness, eventually, he said, becomes self-sustaining. And I think this is what he's getting at, this, this idea that your life can be workable. Because here's the thing, right now, we look at all of our faults and failings and say, oh, my gosh, I have so many faults and failings, how will this ever work? But if you can use the, the three object slogan, where you mentally take on the negativity of others, you say, okay, I'm feeling angry and upset right now. May I and all beings, may I take on the negativity of all beings, and by my working through this moment, may I and all beings be free from these kinds of mental afflictions, and in the future, may we become Buddhas. If we can do that and think that way, we've actually begun to make our negative mental afflictions more malleable. We've actually begun to make our mind a little more workable and pliable. And that is a really powerful thing, to be able to make your mind powerful, I mean, to be pliable in a, in a moment-to-moment situation. And if you can just see your mind as workable, if you can just give yourself a timeout, that's, that's making it workable. Whatever you can do to make your mind more workable is, is, is showing that you're gaining some proficiency. And then finally, the last slogan in this section is, proficiency means you do it even when you are distracted. Then Jamgon Kontrul, who himself was a horseman, said, a skilled horseman does not fall from his horse even when they are distracted. In the same way, if you are able to take adverse conditions that suddenly develop as aids to your mind training practice, without even expressly directing your attention to do so, then you are proficient in mind training. In this way, the two Bodhicittas, relative Bodhicitta and ultimate Bodhicitta, arise clearly and effortlessly, along with everything that appears, enemies, friends, troublemakers, happiness or suffering. Then he ends the section by saying, these four lines describe signs that your training in Bodhicitta has been effective and the proficiency has developed, but they are not signs that you need not train further. Until Buddhahood is attained, you should train to strengthen Bodhicitta. So that's, that's the fifth of the seven points of mind training, how to tell and how to judge how your practice is going. So I can't believe it. I have fifteen minutes. Wow! So we, we can either use the fifteen minutes for questions, and then I will use uh, and then I will use the balance of the, of the period to do a short meditation. Uh, we'll do a short Tonglen meditation. But, uh, you can, if you have questions, you can put them in chat. Uh, or you can, uh, unmute your microphone and say hi.
Lama Kathy?
Yes.
Did someone else?
No, we're good.
Oh, okay. Um, I guess just an observation, but I wonder if, if you have any recommendations or if, um, if this is anything that, that you've done or any of your students have done. But I, I feel like I need to, when I review my notes and, and go back through the, these sections in the book, that I want to get like a little pocket notebook and write down all these specific aspiration prayers, you know, and then put like little tabs of like, oh, this is this situation. What do I, okay, you know, this kind of thing. Is that going overboard? Do people do that? Is that a thing?
Well, you know, I, I have not heard of people doing that specific thing. But, um, what I have, uh, I have had people tell me. Uh, one of my favorite, uh, Dharma friends', uh, suggestions, one of my favorite suggestions comes from one of my Dharma friends in California. Uh, and, um, and what she did was, um, I made little, um, business cards with the three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue, um, the little guided meditation on how to take negative mental afflictions, take on the negative mental afflictions of others. I, I, I paraphrased, um, the translation in the book because number one, I didn't want to get into copyright infringement or whatever. But I, I just wrote, "May this mental affliction," fill in the blank, "contain, may my mental affliction contain the mental affliction of all sentient beings. By my working through this moment of mental affliction, may, uh, I and all beings be free of this mental affliction and may we all become Buddhas, the complete freedom from this mental affliction." Honestly, I sort of think that this is all you need. I sort of think you won't need a notebook if you really take to heart that slogan, that one single slogan. If you can do that one thing, it's really going to actually help with everything. And then the other, and the, uh, if you can do that, and what this, what my friend, Dharma friend from California did, she would get really angry at people in traffic. So what she did was she took this little card and she pasted it literally on the center of her steering wheel. And, and, and so that, that when she was really angry in traffic, she would see it and would, even if she was saying it through gritted teeth, "Uh, take on the negative mental afflictions of all beings," at least she would do it. So I would say that would be the very best prompt that you could do would be to make a habit of reciting that formula to yourself every single day, at least once a day. Paste it to your, I had another person say they pasted it to their mirror, their bathroom mirror, so they would read it every day. I had another person say they, they pasted a copy of it on their desk so that they would remember to say it at least once a day while they were at work. And so I'd say that's really important. And then the other one that would really be helpful would be to memorize that one, uh, thing, that one prayer that we shared. I think it was during session one or session two. "When I am happy, may my merit flow to others, may its blessings fill the sky. When I am unhappy, may the sufferings of all beings be mine, may the ocean of suffering run dry," you know, that one. I think that those two things and to remember those over and over and over again and to keep wishing for the bent, that we benefit every being we come into contact with. Like when you're walking in a group of people and you feel really self-conscious, like somebody is like staring at you, instead of saying, "Hey, buddy, what are you looking at?" Instead of doing that, you can think, "Okay, whatever you're seeing, I don't know, but may you see the Buddha, may you see my teachers, may you see the Dharma." So I'd say those three things, the three object slogan, that one prayer, and then wishing to benefit beings in as many situations as you can think of. I don't think you need to make a tab or anything. You know, does that make sense?
Yes, thank you very much.
Keep it simple. Yeah. Okay. Um, let's see here. There's actually, now we've got questions in chat. Thank you. Uh, let's see. All right, let's see what we got here. "What is meant by a joyous state?" Uh, yeah, I think what it is, is, um, at first, I think a joyous state means just not feeling bad all the time. Okay? Um, I, I, for me, that's what it's, that's how I noticed that the, the practice was starting to work. I was at work one day and I, I honestly, this happened. I, I was, I went to work one morning and I'm sitting there at the newspaper office on the copy desk. It's like 7:15 in the morning. And I look out over the newsroom and I said to myself, "Wow, I don't feel bad anymore. Wow, this Dharma stuff must really work." And it was just that one, like that lifting. So it wasn't joy, but it was like not feeling bad. So for me, that was how it started. And now I don't like feel happy and joyous all the time. Uh, I have a weird sense of humor and you might think I'm happy and joyous all the time, but I just have a weird sense of humor. It's probably a defense mechanism and I'm sure myself and my therapist still need to work on that. But, uh, but by the same token, I feel as though, I feel like I can get a handle on my negative mental afflictions by using these methods that I just talked about, aspiring and the three objects and stuff like that. So I don't know, I, I mean, I feel like instead of it being like happy, happy, joy, joy, it's like, it's more like, "Oh, I can handle this. I can handle this." Or like, "Oh, I can use my slogans." Or, "Oh, I can do Tonglen." And so again, it might not be the kind of joy you're looking for, but anyhow. So I hope that helps. Next question. "Sometimes emotions, feelings or just mindless scrolling overtake it, take us and it makes it difficult to shut down." Very powerful. Yeah, I just learned about doomsday scrolling. I didn't even know it was a thing. You know, the, the news is so bad right now that people like, they, they like, they like scroll through the, the, their cell phones and stuff, looking at the bad news and then like freaking out. So like the minute you find yourself doing that, put the phone down. I'm talking to myself. Put the phone down. And, uh, and then the other thing that I would do is when you find you're doing that, imagine that your teacher or the Buddha is above your head. Honest, honest to John, Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche gave this to me as my first practice, even before he taught me how to meditate. He said, "When your mind is not feeling stable," and I think this counts. "When your mind's not feeling stable," he said, "think of the Buddha as being present with you and pray to the Buddha to be sort of relieved from your negative state of mind." And so that's, those are the two practices that I've used the most is like thinking of the Buddha and just putting the darn thing down. I, I don't know what else to tell you, except you can also have compassion for yourself and say, "Okay, scrolling, bad habit. That's so kind of you to try to protect me. It's just so wonderful. Thank you. But I've got it from here. Me and the Buddha, we got it from here." So let's try that. Privately, oh, this is a private question, but I think I'll try and answer it anyway. "What is the best way to be sure that a Lama can attend one while one is dying? Is it best to ask a trusted family member in advance to call a Lama who knows you?" Yes, that is absolutely the right thing to do. My, my friend, who is, some of my friends on this, uh, on this chat, uh, on this, in this class are chaplains. And they, and they have, um, one of my friend, chaplain friends, Chaplain Kathy Lamo has created something called, uh, Spiritual Advanced Directives. And I don't have time to look it up in chat, but Lamo, if you're still here and if you can hear me, uh, and you can post the, um, to everyone, the, uh, in chat, the, uh, the link for the Spiritual Advanced Directives. You can just write it down. You don't have to have a form to fill out, but you can just write down what you want done and give it to a trusted family member and say, "This is how I want, what I want done." And then you can, they'll have the Lama come. I've actually had people do that and it works. Let's see. Uh, you can, yes, you can definitely ask a Lama in advance if they'll pray for you. Even if they can't come to your bedside, you can get a Lama to pray for you. And it said, then somebody's saying, "What technique do you have to slap us out of being trapped in those moments?" Oh, yeah. I, you know, uh, the, I think that's, that's the mo, the moment of the doomsday scrolling or whatever. I would say that recognizing that it's not doing you any good. Uh, there's, is, is a good way to do it. But I have to also tell you this one thing that happened. Um, I, I was invited to lunch with Khenpo Soltrum Jamso, one of the masters of, um, of modern Tibetan Buddhism. He's in retirement now and, uh, but when he was still in the U.S., there are people on this call who may have actually been at that lunch. Uh, Bill, you might have actually been at that lunch with Khenpo Soltrum Jamso at Malu Dusen's place. And, and he was answering questions at lunch and he said, um, he said, "Oh," and sometimes, he said, now forgive me, I'm going to make a loud sound. And, and, you know, he said, "And sometimes if you say, peh, P.E., pay," he said, "you might have an interesting experience." And then he just went back to eating, like it was like the most normal thing in the world to be saying this. But apparently, that exclamation, "Pay, P.E., pay," is a way of like clearing your mind. So that, you try it. I, I've tried it myself and it actually works for me, but it's really embarrassing. You can't do it in a crowd. Somebody might get really upset. But if you're on, but you know, and, and like, and like, I know many of you have cats. Okay, so like, you know, just, just know that your cats may jump straight up off the, you know, right? But anyhow, just be kind to your cats. Uh, I have heard, too often been attached to the judgment of others. Could you say more about that? Oh, yeah. Um, well, uh, being attached to the judgment of others. Oh, my gosh, it looks like I am going to run down on time. Okay, uh, being attached to the judgment of others. If a person has taken the vow of Buddhist refuge, we are taking refuge in the Buddha as our teacher, the Dharma as our path and the Sangha as our community. And so when we begin to take refuge in the judgment of others, if we can remember refuge at that time, it'd be, it would be a powerful thing. Like I'm not taking refuge in this other person's opinion. I'm going to take refuge in the Buddha instead. And I think it's related to that teaching that Khenpo Rinpoche gave me where he said, "When your mind feels unstable, think of the Buddha and pray to the Buddha." So I'm hoping that this will help. I don't know. It's a, to me, I see it as, as kind of a refuge problem. And I know a lot of friends are in the 12-step tradition and they talk about this, uh, you know, and it's, and it, it is. It's like, um, putting your trust in someone who can't really guide you. "Can you repeat the prayer about the mistakes?" Yes. Um, it's, it's actually in, uh, on lama-kathy.net, www... Hang on here a second. I have to get to everyone. Dot Lama Kathy dot net. If you go to lama-kathy.net and you look for Tonglen in, I think it's in, I think it's in daily life. Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche, it's, it's a notes from a teaching that he gave. So let's see if I can remember. "For mistakes, you think, 'I've just made a mistake.' All sentient beings make mistakes. We all, we all make mistakes. May all sentient beings' mistakes be contained in this mistake of mine and may in the future, all of us be free from such mistakes and may we become Buddhas, the complete freedom from mistakes." So hopefully that will help. Then, uh, let's see. Oh, boy. Uh, question about tangled. Lama Yashri shared after the Nyingpo prayer that once when he was completing this with Rinpoche, he started doing this for Rinpoche. Lama Yashri said Rinpoche looked straight at him and told him to stop because a Bodhisattva exerts himself joyfully. Interesting. Any comment or observation on this? Yeah, Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche was actually asked about this one time. "Can you do Tonglen for your Buddhist teacher?" And he said, um, "Your, your Buddhist teacher, you should consider them as being a Bodhisattva," you know, and so forth. And so they're the ones who are working for your benefit, so it's not necessary for you to do Tonglen for them. Uh, instead, you should dedicate mantras to them. So, um, that way, um, that way, you're, because basically he's, he, what Khenpo Rinpoche was saying is that it's, um, not appropriate to do Tonglen for your Buddhist teacher, but it is appropriate to, uh, to dedicate the merit of your practice and your mantras to them. Because actually, they, they take, taking on the, the sufferings of others are what they're supposed to do. That's what they do, it's joyful. Yeah, no, you're welcome. Thanks. Um, "I have blessed rice, but don't remember if they were from mandalas. Is it okay to use on the head in lieu of sand?" Yes, you could, you could definitely use blessed rice. "In case it helps, I now do Tonglen for the people in the news stories when I see the news and it helps me stay grounded." That is excellent. Even if all you do is like, you, you give one mindful breath of Tonglen, sending out goodness to them or removing their suffering, that's a good way to, to, and, or you can pray and imagine light coming from the Buddha on people in the news. Yes. Okay, wonderful. You guys are great. Let's see. Uh, that's it. I got through the questions. Wow, all right. So yay. So, um, uh, instead of doing a lengthy practice of Tonglen, uh, right now, I, I'm going to just ask everybody to sit quietly uh, for just a few, um, probably about a minute or two and, um, and become aware of your breathing. Breathing in and breathing out. Stay mindful of your breath coming in and out. Now with the out breath, think that you give happiness and goodness to all beings throughout space. Thinking that like the sun spills over the horizon in the morning and, and lights all parts of the world. Think that your goodness and virtue go out to all parts of the world. Touches beings and makes them joyful. With the in breath, think that you are removing from all sentient beings, all of their suffering and difficulty and that they're relieved from this and that as this suffering touches you, it meets your Bodhisattva motivation. It dissolves into nothing and disappears. And so we'll do this quiet Tonglen for just a moment or two. And now we'll let go of the visualization and let our mind rest quietly within itself. No you, no sentient beings, no act of saving. Just let your mind rest. Okay. That concludes a short practice of, of Tonglen. So, um, we, uh, we dedicate the merit of this evening session to all suffering beings and make the aspiration that all suffering beings are freed from suffering, come to happiness and then to Buddhahood. I'll recite a short prayer of dedication in English and then I'd like for you to remain on the, on the call for just a few more seconds while I explain next week's class. Through this merit, may all achieve the omniscience of Buddhahood. May it defeat our common enemy, wrongdoing. From the stormy waves of birth, old age, sickness and death. From the ocean of samsara, may we free all beings. May we free all beings. May we free all beings. Thank you. Um, I'd like to, um, make a note to everyone that next week, our class is- I'd like to make a note to everyone that next week, our class is going to shift by 30 minutes. The reason for this is that our home monastery, Karma Triana Dharma Chakra, is starting its annual 10-day retreat, and the teachings are going to be given in the evening from 8:00 PM Eastern Time to 9:30 PM Eastern Time. So I'm going to shift the start of this class to 6:30 Eastern Time, only for next week, only for next week. I'll send it in the email, I'll try to get everybody on board with it. But next week, join us, this is August 19th, is that right, August the 19th? Yes, it is at 6:30 PM Eastern. And then the class will end about 15 minutes earlier than usual so that everybody has time to reset in case they're attending the 10-day teaching. So, you know, thank you guys, you know, for your patience and understanding. And I will try to upload this class, the video from this class to YouTube, to my YouTube channel tonight. It probably won't get there for an hour or so, because it takes a while to move it from one place to another. But I appreciate everything. Next week, we'll be talking about point six, which are the behavioral precepts of a Lojong practitioner. Everybody wants to know, what good has tong len done for you? What good does Lojong do for you? And so next week's class is going to be about like all the ways that you might want to, all the kind of things you might want to get away with in your life, like what if you were really mad about something, can you like really get mad, is that all right? So we're going to talk about all that next week. So you might make a note of the things you want to start working on, because we're probably going to cover at least one of them next week. And that will be pages 30 through 37, pages 30 through 37 next week. All right, you guys are amazing. So you can unmute and say bye-bye, or just say goodbye and we'll talk to you soon. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Lama Kathy.
Best book club ever. I'm looking at all of your pictures and praying for you, all right, all right, it's great to see you. Anybody has questions, they can write to me. Thank you, lama-kathy@columbusktc.org. If I don't write back in three days, write me again. All right. Okay, take good care, everybody. I'm going to go ahead and end the meeting, so take good care.
Night Lama Kathy.
Thank you, yeah, be kind to beings.
All beings.
All beings, be kind to yourself. Okay, bye-bye.